I distributed the final numbers from the state. So if you have that at home and you look at it and say, hey, Mr. Superintendent, you know, the numbers are different, that is why. Because the left-hand column is what was approved by the voters locally, and the state added more subsidy in the summer months. That will come to you as extra revenue. You will get it. But I want to make sure we understand why that is the way that it is and that the numbers that I distributed earlier when your subsidy figures were released for comparison purposes include the additional subsidy. So there's a slight nuance there. And the other number I want to call your attention to on this page is all the way at the bottom where it says fund balance forward. In order for me to present a flat budget to begin discussion, we used eighty-three thousand dollars in carryover. I said, as a result of your audit findings, you have one hundred and seventy-two available. So just as a starting off point, I'm proposing to use half, and the other half is still available. And this is the number that you have full control over. That can change. So my point is, some of the things that were mentioned under the school committee report, boiler, roof, infrastructure types of things, if you want to put those in your budget, we can put those in your budget. No problem. Whatever the estimates come in. So theoretically, if you want to add expenses in terms of infrastructure projects, you might not be able to use eighty-three thousand dollars in carryover. If you have one hundred and seventy-two available and you want to spend one hundred and twenty on infrastructure projects, you're only going to be able to use fifty for carryover. But right now, just for discussion purposes, to get the ball rolling, I propose using half. And what that does is that essentially provides tax relief. So the additional local went down, and that's how that is working. On page two, you can see expenditures for salaries for the staff and benefits. And one thing that I will say, if we look in the middle where it says technology coordinator salary, I have been asked in the past where that was located in the budget. And in years past, it was kind of lumped in with the ed techs. So for clarity, my staff separated that amount. So even though, if you look in the middle of the page, you see some empty columns, that's not a new position. We just separated it from the ed tech grouping and let it stand by itself. So that is indeed the specific costs currently for your technology coordinator.
I have a question here. And how many, just so, for all of these, how many weeks are employees required to work? Like teachers, how many weeks? Is there a...
Teachers are required to work one hundred and eighty days.
One hundred and eighty days.
And their salary is based on that. And what happens is, the teacher who chooses the twenty-sixth pay option extends their pay in the summertime.
Is there thirty weeks of actual work? Because there's a week off for Christmas, a week off here. If you divided up, if you divided up a salary by weeks, because it's been mentioned in the past that some employees work so many hours per week. I would just like to be able to tell them that. How many work weeks are there?
Yep. There are thirty-six weeks for a teacher. However, a teacher is salaried, so you won't see a weekly breakdown for a teacher. But support staff, and their contract is different because there are some support staff members that we require to come in during the summertime for shorter periods of time. There are some support staff members who get paid for certain holidays, so it's different with them, but it is expressed weekly.
Say it was an hourly employee on there, how many weeks would they actually be working? Because you wouldn't count spring break, and you wouldn't count Christmas break week.
It's defined by the contract, so I...
Oh, okay.
Normally, you'd be correct.
I think it'd be about thirty-two weeks of actual work weeks.
The support staff contract specifically identifies some employees as year-long employees and some as, some as school years. It's school year and part-time, if I remember the lingo correctly. School year employees and part-time employees. And it's defined by number of, number of days and hours. And without the language right immediately in front of me, I hesitate to go beyond that.
It doesn't concern the contract, so that's okay. I just wondered how many weeks? If it was like thirty-two weeks, that school is actually in session.
Okay. At the bottom of page two, the other thing I would call your attention to, this is where your secondary tuition is constructed in your budget. We are anticipating forty-three secondary students next year. That is an increase from the forty that we have currently. So if you're looking at your budget here, you can see that there's a, there's an increase in this cost center under regular instruction. We flip over to page three. The other area that I want to call your attention to is special education. Obviously, salary and benefits here for your special education staff. What I want to call to your attention is, lying toward the end, you can see that next year, there is a seventy thousand dollar figure there for day treatment, and that represents two students. And the one right below that, secondary special education, you see special education tuition, and that line increased as well. So these are the two areas where there is a increase to your budget. Special education in the form of day treatment and tuition, and regular instruction, which also includes your secondary tuition. You have more students that are attending. Also, under secondary instruction, and I neglected to mention this on the previous page, the salary agreements that have been reached for your support staff are included in it. So, just so we understand.
What is summer services, E S Y?
E S Y is extended, extended school year. If you had a student whose I E P calls for supplemental instruction in the summertime, that's where we would pay that.
Debbie, can I see that figure? It's fifteen thousand dollars for this coming school year where it didn't exist last year.
That, that, that's because our special education director is anticipating that you're going to have a student that acquires those services.
Now, when you say that to Mr. Johnson, going back a little bit, what about the special, the pre-k? Where is all that at?
Right on, right on the previous page.
But I mean, you know, you said the state is making changes for the, the schools to pick up that part of it. Is that still what it is?
C D S backing out. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
The, that has not been finalized because there's a lot of discussion at the state level as to how those services are going to be delivered. Some towns are in a better position to deliver services to three-year-olds than others. And they're, and the state is also struggling with how to represent those costs on the E P S printout. And I apologize, it's kind of a technical answer, but the state, the state is really wrestling with how to implement that and to run those services through the existing formula and the existing structure. And I hope to get an update on that next month. If we're looking on page four, here you see the budget center for extracurricular and co-curricular along with the health services. So if we are wondering, I mentioned that you share a school nurse with the district. That's where this cost center is located, number five, at the bottom of page four. You can see that, though you can see those expenses located there. System administration on page five. System administration is your share of the district cost. And Lubec's share of the district cost is going down, and that reflects a decrease in your student enrollment because those costs are distributed on a percentage basis based on resident students. School administration, this is the office of the principal as well as the support staff, their salaries and benefits. Some supply lines are located here. And one word I'll say about the supply lines, Tina has worked with the staff to ascertain what their requests, what their needs might be. And those have been integrated. But those are some areas where this board would have budgetary control over. I know some of these costs, you have very little control over. You have to tuition your high school kids out, and you have to meet the requirements of special education students. But some lines, you do have more control over, and those would be some of them. On page six, transportation, bus driver, gas, insurance, and so on at the top. At the bottom, facilities maintenance. One thing I do want to call your attention to at the bottom, if we look where it says aquaculture demolition, we've talked about this earlier tonight. Mike is correct. We did budget for it in the current year and would like to get that project done this year because as you can see, if we look under the column for school year eighteen, nineteen, we did not budget for it. We, I kind of see that as a one-time cost. We budgeted for it in seventeen, eighteen, let's get it done because if we can get the project completed, there really isn't any need for us to budget for it again. So you can see that we didn't. And I'm optimistic that once we get the bids out there, that we will be able to complete that project this year.
Before we do this, there are other questions.
Sure.
As an A O S, A O S is supposed to be grouped together, and the whole idea of having an A O S is saving money. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we've ever, as an A O S, gone out to bid for fuel or gasoline for vehicles. Fuel for schools and something like that. And I understand, because we're spread around a little bit, that, you know, someone in Eastport might not want to deliver it to Lubec, or vice versa. But there are companies around that do cover the whole A O S district with delivery trucks. Is this something that A O S is, as, as an entity, the A O S can put out fuel, oil bids, propane bids, and diesel bids to see if we can actually get a little bit bigger bang for the buck?
If the, if the member towns all agree to, the answer is yes. And that, that, that is something that...
Why would they not agree to it?
And other products too, like grillings. There's a lot of things that would cost, yeah, one, like other products.
I can share the current situation in many, in many of the towns. Alexander and Charlotte buy their heating oil from V L Tamaro. It's kind of a, kind of a local thing, and they want to support local business. I don't believe, just to use them as an example, I don't believe V L Tamaro comes all the way to Lubec, or Eastport for that matter. I know in years past, many of our A O S member towns used Dead River for heating fuel. In the Dead River contract, there is potentially a penalty if you don't use enough of the gallons that you're allotted because the oil company has to pay for those gallons upfront before they're delivered to us. So that made some towns nervous enough where they switched. There are, there are towns that use Eastern, like you do, for heating oil, and they've been very happy with Eastern. So there are at least, at least three different heating oil vendors that provide heating oil to the A O S. And in diesel fuel for buses, it's even more than three, I would suspect because, believe it or not, I've got one town that has worked in arrangement with the state garage, and they fill it up at the, with the state garage. But your, your point, Mike, about can we save money as a group by putting together a larger proposal for more gallons usage, get a better bulk rate, it is within the realm of possibilities. It is allowable, assuming that the member towns within the A O S agree to do it.
Could this be something I presented at an A O S meeting?
It could be.
To actually even entertain? I mean, because, you know, I understand that buying local and so like that. But, you know, the thing is, you know, we're trying to save money, and we're trying to save money as a collective group. I mean, because we're all taxpayers. You know, taxes go up and, you know, somewhere that, you gotta draw the line, so...
What I, what I can tell you is that the A O S met last night and adopted a budget that's going to go out to the voters in April. So it may be too late for this upcoming year, but in future years, that is something that can be discussed.
Speaking of that, we'll push to Mr. Johnson. Is there a way that we can take a little bit of time sometime to review the A O S budget for, for, yeah?
At, at one time, we had entertained the idea of a bus driver custodian as a full-time position.
Yeah, I mean, thank, thank you for reminding me. If this board wants to advertise that position again, we still, we still have a need for a driver. We have gentlemen who are very generous with their time, who have helped us on an as-needed or part-time or seasonal basis, but we still do have a need for another full-time driver. If we think, if this board thinks we've got a better chance of attracting a full-time driver if we can pair it with a custodial position, now is the time to put that into your budget.
Did they used to do that, Tina? Wasn't that the way it used to be?
I think at one time, and then we, we advertised a couple of years ago and didn't have any applicants. Now, I might be thinking, trying to think outside, but I'm thinking about the correctional facility that may potentially close. Would that open up a bigger pool for us? I don't know.
Barbara.
Just wanted to mention that if you go back, and Wanda, I'm going to ask you to help me find the years. Joe Glickin was the, the head custodian down at the school. Had to be for twenty years or better. Joe, in, in order to get his job, and I have checked this with him, even though he's not living in Lubec, part of his requirement was he had to have his bus driver license. When Joe retired, and whoever came on and replaced him, that was not a requirement, and I don't understand why. Because Joe being the custodian there all day long, if a bus driver got sick or couldn't come in, you had a bus driver already there in the school.
I don't have a button to advertise it for that vote because I know we do, we do have a need for a bus driver. And, you know, it is good to have someone who can do two jobs.
I did have people acquire both jobs in schools that they were both full-time. And I said, who tried to pass a bus like this, it hasn't worked out. But I mean, it can't work out because the right person may come along.
That's right.
And, you know, and to be honest with you, we have, I mean, we have, we're very fortunate right now to get by what we do. But we do need to look to the future because eventually, that pool is going to be...
And it doesn't matter what school district you are in. And it doesn't matter even what state in New England anymore because bus drivers are hard to find.
And if people can't survive on twenty, twenty-five dollars a week, I mean, if they're not to live, so ahead of this full-time position, you might get more people in, you know, to apply.
If, if this board wants, wants to run an ad, can I, can I get a motion to that effect?
Do we need a custodian too, Tina? Do we, we have the two, do we need another one? I mean, I don't know.
Can I...
We, we had this position, the combination position briefly last year. And we kept all of our existing custodians just to see how it goes. And that turned, as it turned out, that person took another job during the course of the year, and we finished as we had originally. So if we add essentially half a custodian position, I, I personally believe that you've got a large enough facility, facility there, and I think there's enough work for everybody. However, this board could base questions from the town saying, why did you increase your custodial staff by half a position? The easy answer is to say, we paired it with a bus driving position because we needed to attract a bus driver. And you can defend that position with confidence. However, I just make you aware that you may come under, there may be some questions saying, yeah, but you extend, you also added half the position to the custodial staff, and typically, that would be true.
Isn't, isn't one of our full-time employees maintenance, not custodial? And our custodial is only part-time? Isn't she...
Isn't that maintenance person a custodial person too?
She always... She always titled custodial, I believe.
Uh, why is it under maintenance on the budget?
Because that's what this assignment falls into.
And he does more maintenance than he does custodial.
I mean...
To me, to me, he's maintenance.
We have to be careful talking about names.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, maybe that's something we can talk about, you know? If we're not supposed to talk about it in infected dispatches. If we, you know, if it's something that we need, another custodian.
I'm uncomfortable with adding a half of, of, with a part-time custodian because they didn't be there during the day when they went on the bus, correct? That's what it'd be.
So I mean...
Could be at some time.
Could be, or could maneuver it till they're later on. Sorry, Kenny, I need to interrupt.
That's okay. I just want the board to be comfortable because right now, you're talking about potentially adding a position to the budget or a half a position to the budget, advertising for a position. And all that's fine for open session because it's, it has budgetary consequences. So that's fine. I, I, I don't like to hear specific names mentioned, but you can talk about a position generically. Do you want to add a position? Do you not? You know, that, that's fine. And it would be located here. So the other thing that I would say, piggybacking on the earlier report from the school committee, if you want a major infrastructure, capital improvement project, boiler, roof, plumbing, whatever, it would go under facilities maintenance. And when you take this draft version with you tonight, I would encourage you to make some notes in that space there on the right and record your thoughts, and we can continue the conversation at the next meeting. But if you're thinking about projects of that type, it would go under this cost center, is all I'm saying. On page seven, all other expenditures. Occasionally, I get asked what's included under all other. And this is your food service program, as well as your contingency. Finally, on page eight, you can see the summary of the cost centers, what went up, what went down, and the total. And the last thing that I want to call your attention to, because this will be asked, this version of your budget, even though I said represents no increase to the taxpayer, this version, the total size of the budget did increase by one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So a citizen, if they ask you, how can you increase the budget by one hundred and seventy-nine thousand and have no impact to taxation? The answer is found on the revenue page because you have more revenue in the form of additional subsidy and the use of the balance forward. So if you get that question on the street, that's, that's the answer.
It says one hundred and ninety-seven here. Do I have a different...
That's why I said, yes, you do have a different one. Because I worked, I worked on it this afternoon.
Thank you. Make over this here.
Mr. Johnson, last year, I got the final, I guess it would have been, when did our new budget start, in July?
July one.
July one. And I got the final budget report from your office.
Right.
And so, you know, I, in looking at that, and of course, it's right there to look at, the amount remaining, where did, like, it would be probably approximately, let's say, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Where would that go in our, our new budget? Like, there's...
And, and that's a very good question. The answer is, any unexpended, any unexpended funds from one year to the next go into the general fund carryover, and they're recorded by the auditor. So the one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar figure that I've referenced this evening, that figure is, that was arrived at, again, by research from previous years. The auditor did a, did a thorough check. And also, that number would include unexpended revenue, excuse me, I'd write, unexpended budgetary lines and additional revenue. So I mentioned earlier this evening that Lubec will show additional revenue on the revenue side because the state released more revenue after you adopted your budget. That additional revenue goes into the general fund carryover also, along with the anything left over that was unexpended. All that goes into general fund carryover.
So where do I assign that? That's what, is it the fund balance forward, what you were just talking about?
Right, that's part of it. The, the general fund carryover number is listed in the audit report. The eighty-four thousand dollars you see on page one, eighty-three, six, seventy, where it says fund balance forward, that is a portion of your general fund carryover. It's a little less than fifty percent. So there is more carryover money available. It is a board decision how much of it you use to support projects. But just as a starting point, that eighty-three is acting as tax relief, and this version of the budget does show no increase, but I, the budget will change as the process moves along.
Now, like this, I didn't find it on, I didn't find it in here. But let's say this year, we had a, a, a large expenditure. So it might have come out of that, right out of the fund balance forward. We had an expenditure in, to Cal, with Calis. So is that where that comes out of?
Okay, I, that's a good question, and I'll be, I'll be very specific. Just because you have more revenue, you still have to observe the spending limit that the voters set when they approve the budget. Whenever we project revenue, and this is even more important in towns that have tuition revenue. You have very little tuition revenue. You have to be conservative when you project revenue because you don't want to wind up with a shortfall. But just because you think you've got a little extra revenue because you were conservative in constructing your budget doesn't give you license to spend it. You have a hard and fast spending limit that the voters establish when they approve your budget, and that's on the expenditure side. There is a process to, you know, to increase the size of your budget. It requires a special vote. But to answer your question specifically, if you have an unexpected expense, we had one this past year, you're right. If the transmission drops out of the bus, you get a leaky roof, something happens, you still can't just take it from the revenue. You have to try and work within your expenditure limit. And if as a board, you don't think there's enough money there, then we have to call a special meeting to enlarge the budget, and it gets a little way... It can be done, and we've actually had to do it in some other places. But it's not automatically just drawn from extra revenue. You still have to observe the spending limit, is the answer.
I have a few questions for you. I think it was either in December or January, I had come to the school board and asked that you give the last three years. You're only giving us last year's information. We would like the town budget had to go back fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and then projected for nineteen. And the other question I have, if I could please, some of these for seventeen, eighteen have no dollar amounts in them. One of them is postage. Well, how could you have no money for postage this year? You need five hundred dollars for postage next year.
What I, what I, what I suspect is, it was, it might have been included in another line in my staff, and we organized it, but I can double-check that. Barbara, this is, this is a draft budget, so anything like that, don't hesitate to call it to my attention, and I will verify.
That was just one when we were turning the pages that I thought right away and saying, well, okay, well, how do you have postage one year and none the next? So, but we would like to see fifteen, like I said, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. And the treasurer here at the town office gives us every time they meet what's actually left in that each account. And we'd like to know when you start to meet with the budget committee, what's actually left in each of these line items.
I can, I can bring it with me.
Okay. If they could just add another column, like, you know, balance left, I don't know. I don't know how...
Well, what we do is, it's two separate reports. One, one is your actual budget that you have there. And the other one is called the year-to-date or the year-end, depending upon how you program the software. But I'll bring it with me.
Only because she has hers going straight across so we can see what's left in it. But I just wanted to ask if you could please add those years to her. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to accept the first draft of this budget?
Hold that down.
Okay, I also get a motion if you want to re-advertise that competition position.
Okay, let's, let's grab this one first. Okay, so Jen has made the motion, second on the first draft of the budget.
Yeah, Wanda.
All in favor? Okay. Need a motion to advertise for a bus driver slash custodian for the upcoming school year? Second on that motion? All in favor?
Don't get mad at me if you want to take the motion off.
Motion to advertise for the upcoming school year janitor slash custodian.
Bus driver.
Bus driver, I'm sorry. Janitor slash bus driver.
So we're not going to have any more discussion of all that? I mean, I still don't know where you're at with the need, how the need come up tonight. And I think to say that, what happened at the school that needs another custodian?
We need another bus driver. So we're thinking, if we, if we make it a full-time position by our custodian, we might get more attention for driver.
I'm all increasing pay for bus drivers.
We have some of the best pay in the state of Maine.
We do.
Careful. What, you can't... Wait, you can't, to answer your question, Stephanie, the bus drivers are recognized as part of the support staff contract, so you can't just increase.
Oh, they're part of that?
They are.
But there's such a high need day.
The, the, in, in.
And they're crucial to girls' schools, and you can't just pay them peanuts.
The support staff as a whole has been supportive of us hiring bus drivers, and they, they understand that, but there's only so far I can go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Advertising position.
We don't have to hire, but we at least get some applicants.
I mean, it's just advertising. We're not hiring. We're actually seeing what's up there.
We got three oh, four hundred, three oh, three oh.
Three oh. And I make a motion during the meeting.